Well, thank you, Ms. Henry, for coming and doing your presentation. We appreciate this valuable information that will be reviewed by our citizens at a later time as well. So again, thank you for taking the time to come.
Thank you. And where can I leave this information?
Okay, at this time, we would like to go into executive session at 6:12. And that's in accordance with Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, Section 551. Point 017 and 551.072.
As mega protein. Okay, at this time, I would like to have Councilwoman Susan Sewell to give us the invocation and lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor.
Lord, please bless this council, the mayor, and city staff as we work to move the city forward in the best interest of its citizens. Please guide us in our decision-making to a clear path in your honor. Let us use the resources provided to us in the best interests for our city and create and sustain an environment of unity for the good of all citizens in our fair city. Let us all keep Bob and Nancy Watkins' family in our thoughts and prayers due to the recent loss of their grandson. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with justice and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
At this time, our City Secretary Art Camacho will inform us of announcements.
As Mayor Protem. Okay, at this time, I would like to have Councilwoman Susan Sewell to give us the invocation and lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor.
Lord, please bless this council, the mayor, and city staff as we work to move the city forward in the best interest of its citizens. Please guide us in our decision-making to a clear path in your honor. Let us use the resources provided to us in the best interests for our city and create and sustain an environment of unity for the good of all citizens in our fair city. Let us all keep Bob and Nancy Watkins' family in our thoughts and prayers due to the recent loss of their grandson. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with justice and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
At this time, our City Secretary Kamacho will inform us of announcements, any events in our city.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Meeting announcements for February 24th, 2020, in the Public Library, Storytime, Tinker Tuesdays, Imagination Station, teen programs, and other library activities are all listed for the dates and times, so please check the library website. The additional activities include the GED study classes, which will be held Tuesday and Thursday from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., AARP tax preparation assistance is on Thursdays from 12:00 to 3:00, and registration is required. Computer classes in both English and Spanish, and you can call for schedule and registration. The Teen Escape Room, Dr. Seuss, is on Friday, March 6th, from 6:30 to 9:00. It's free, but again, registration is required, so please call, come in, and register, or go online. Sweet Spring Break starts from Monday through Friday, March 9th through the 13th, from 2:00 to 4:00. Activities appropriate for ages kindergarten through 5th grade will be held during the spring break week. Do-it-yourself Wednesday will be Wednesday, March 11th, at 6:30. The craft is fanfetti candles, and there will be free supplies are provided, but registration is required, so you can come in and register, or call or go online. After hours Paint Night is for cacti, is on Friday, March 13th, from 6:30 to 9:00 for ages 21 and older. You have free supplies, classes free, and supplies are provided, but registration is required, so again, either come in, register, call, or go online. The Halton City Library has been notified that it is a recipient of the 2019 Achievement of Excellence Award, and a presentation for this will be forthcoming. In Parks and Recreation, Spring Break Camp, registration is now open, and it's only $75 for the week until March 2nd, and then the price will increase to $100. They're accepting ages 6 through 13. If you need more information, please contact the rec center. Soccer registration is now open for boys and girls. Ages 4 through 6 is $50. Seven on up is $80, and the registration ends Saturday, February 29th. And for more information, please contact the rec center. Applications are being accepted online from the Halton City graduating seniors from the BISD for the 2020 Fine Arts Scholarship, and the last day to apply is Friday, March 20th. The 2020 Halton City Car Fest will be Saturday, April 4th, at the Halton High School. Check the city website for info about sponsorships, vendor, and community booth opportunities. The deadline to enter the 2020 Images of Halton City Photo Contest is Monday, April 6th. Details and registration forms are available on the city website. Friends Helping Friends will host a Burgers and Bingo on Saturday, March 21st, at the Senior Center, starting at 6:00 p.m. Bingo prizes will be $100 per game, and will also include a bake sale, door prizes, and silent auction. The proceeds will benefit Friends Helping Friends, Senior Transportation Services, and tickets are available at the library and the Senior Center. The Republican and Democratic primary early voting will continue for the federal primary until tomorrow, the 28th. On Election Day, March 3rd, they will have two voting places in Halton City, and they will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. The two locations are, the first is at W.G. Thomas Coliseum, which is at 6108 Broadway Avenue, and the second is Landmark Baptist Church, which is at 1909 Thomas Road. And that's our announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Kamacho. At this time, we are so fortunate that we have a long-time Employee Service Award to be presented. So Chief Phillips?
Evening, Mayor, Council. I think I'm having a hot flash, I don't know what it is. I'm again honored to be in front of you to recognize a long-time service award for an employee that's been here for 30 years. Not only is he a great officer, he's even a better person. 20 years ago, he was my training, one of my training officers, so any of the bad habits that I have now, I can blame on him. He currently is working for Code and has been instrumental in building a relationship with the community, even though they're often tasked with non-community-related stuff, so he's an awesome person and an awesome officer, and I'm fortunate to work with him. So Sergeant Myers, you want to come up here? And he's a man of few words, but let's see if I can get him to say something.
Great. Thank you. Thirty years have flown by. I'll be here a few more, so you'll see me around. Still got things to do. And with your help, we are definitely heading in the right direction, and it's a pleasure to see that. Great job. Thank you.
At this time, I would like to say, Sergeant Myers, we appreciate your service and dedication to our city and to our community. We really are honored to have you on our Police Department staff. Thank you. Okay, moving along, we will go to the monthly financial reports.
Yes.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor Protem and councilmembers. I'm glad to be here to present the monthly financial report for the month of January. Starting with the summary for all funds, the city have collected 11.6 million and spent about 12.9 million for the month of January. The spend is a bit higher because of the scheduled debt payment of $5 million. That's it for the month of January. Overall, for the beginning of the year, the city have realized $34.9 million, or 44% of the annual revenue, and spent about $27.6 million, or 30% of the annual budget. Moving to the general fund, the city has collected $5.5 million for the month of January and spent about $2.4 million. Overall, from the beginning of fiscal year 2020, the city has realized $15.7 million, or 50% of the annual revenue, and spent about $10.2 million, or 32% of the annual budget. In regards to property tax revenue from general fund, the city collected $4.2 million, or about $4.2 million. Overall, the city collected $9 million, which is 90% of the property tax budgeted for this year. Most likely, another 10% will be collected within the next month, because property tax will be collected during the month of December, January, February, at the most, March. For sales tax, the city has collected $751,218. Overall, from the beginning of the fiscal year 2020, we collected $3.4 million, or $3.5 million. If we look at the three-year comparison, our sales tax is a little bit lower than last year, and that's due to one big taxpayer has opened another 19 locations, which is the sales, the tax has been allocated to different locations now. And overall, our sales tax dropped 5% compared to last year, and it's for the same reason. Open to any questions?
Counsel, is there anyone that would have any questions or anything particularly you would like to ask? Councilman Rayon?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. If we could go back to the graph on the property tax brought in to date, yes, there, thank you. What, we, in, you know, year-to-date, we had budgeted three, was it three million?
We budgeted $10 million for the year.
Why, why is it like almost $819,000?
That's, that's, we collected more than we expected.
And what are, what are we attributing that to?
It's, well, it's different from how people pays for the property tax, so this is how we anticipated, we're going to collect for that month, but it could be next month, we're thinking about collecting $1 million, but it could be $500,000, so that's going to be adjusted with each other. But overall, we've budgeted $10 million. We collected $9 million so far.
Okay. Okay. So we're not going to have a million dollar, when it's all said and done and all the taxes are in, then we're not going to have a million-dollar surplus of money?
I don't, I don't think so. We don't have more than what we budgeted.
We will have more than we budgeted.
Basically, these numbers are just broken down of what we think we might bring in according to the budget, so those numbers that you see there are just based on previous year's history of a proportion of that and what month that comes in. We do not expect to bring in more than we budgeted. We should expect to be right on, and we definitely would not bring in a million more than we budgeted. So the way those numbers are broken down in the budget are just based on previous year's histories, and it's done by a percentage of what percent of the total you budgeted were brought in on those months. So it's nothing more than a projection based on past percentages.
Bad gumming, I thought we were going to have a million dollars.
Wouldn't that be great?
It would be fantastic.
I know.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Councilwoman Susan Sewell?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So with the answer that you just provided, with the sales of the houses north of 820, and maybe next year, or the year after that, we should see an increase in property tax revenue. Is that, is that correct?
It's 25% maybe.
Sure, so we will likely see higher values, and we will take all that into account for next year's budgeted numbers and next year's budget, and you are accurate. That should increase the numbers that we see, for sure.
Thank you.
City Manager Rex Phillips?
Just a, just a reminder, you know, that the houses up by the high school, that subdivision's under a turs, so there will be some increase, but it may not be at first the amount that you think it is. And of course, we have another subdivision coming in that hopefully will be turning dirt next month, I'm hoping, John, and that's, that's going to increase the property tax for sure there. Okay.
No further questions? Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Can we move on? We're going to the consent agenda, which is items two, three, and four. Counsel, what is your pleasure at this time? Okay. Brent Wees?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. At this time, can we move item three and four? I'd like to move that we move those to the regular agenda.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Okay, so at this time, you know, we will be in line to approve the minutes, which is item number two. Walter Grove, Councilman?
Mayor Protem, I make a motion that we approve the minutes for February 10, 2020.
Councilman Wees?
Just for a second.
So Counsel, at this time, if you will prepare to vote? Okay. And this passed unanimously. Now, we will now go to item number three, which is ordinance number 0200715 CU-003-20. And staff, we have Glenda Bachelor?
Thank you, Mayor Protem and Council. So I was asked to read the Exhibit A Design Standards into the minutes for tonight. Item one is sales vehicles to the public or wholesale vehicles to other dealers. Number two, repair vehicles to be sold or sold in the normal course of business as a dealer. Subparagraph A, all repairs and maintenance of vehicles must be made under roof or canopy unless said repair or maintenance is completed within three hours. This provision shall not apply to recreational vehicles. Number three, store vehicle parts and vehicles are allowed. Subparagraph A, the abatement and removal of junk vehicles shall not apply to a vehicle or vehicle part, one, that is stored or parked in a lawful manner on private property in connection with the business of a licensed vehicle dealer, if the vehicle or part and the store, outdoor storage area, if any are, one, maintained in an orderly manner, two, not a health hazard, and three, screened from ordinary public view by appropriate means, including a fence, rapidly going trees, or shrubbery. Item number four, any vehicle, any, eh, any lighting visible from outside the site shall be designated reflective away from adjacent residential districts. No noise, odor, or vibration shall be emitted so that it constitutes a nuisance which substantially exceeds the general level of noise, odor, or vibration emitted by uses adjacent to or immediately surrounding the site. Such comparisons shall be made at the boundaries of the site. Number five, outdoor storage of trash receptacles shall be at the rear or side of the site and shall be totally encircled or screened by a fence, planting, or other suitable visual barrier. Number six, no inoperable vehicles may be stored over 24 hours unless inside a building or behind an approved screening device. And lastly, number seven, no parts of any vehicle will be stored outside the business unless they are behind an approved screening device. This provision shall not apply to accessories displayed for sale. And the majority of these items are taken directly from our C5 Development Regulations and the zoning ordinance.
Okay, Counsel, do you have any discussion or questions for staff or the applicant? Okay, okay, at this time, we're prepared for a motion. Councilman Wees?
Well, I had a comment for staff real fast. On page six of the Exhibit A, page number five, where it says, "Screen by fence," just before we put this in, make sure we do the spelling correction. That's not spelled correctly.
On the trash receptacles?
Yeah, page six, number five, says encircled, or that's spelled incorrectly.
Screened.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance Oscar-2020-007-15, also known as CU-003-20 on the second reading.
Councilman Wees?
Just for a second.
Okay, at this time, we're prepared for you to vote, so if all councilmembers would please vote. Okay, this ordinance has passed unanimously. Okay, we have next, Resolution R-2020-008-03, and Ms. Carter?
Thank you. Good evening, Council, Mayor. This is, the City Council last reviewed and approved a city purchasing policy in 2013, and at present, finance is performing yearly training for all departments for purchasing P-cards and travel process, and at this moment, we thought it would be appropriate to make a small change to the purchasing policy under Section 2, Item C, that says, purchases exceeding $3,000 and up to $50,000. Purchase of goods or services that total $3,000 or more must be placed by the purchasing agent and requires a minimum of three informal quotes, rather written- uh, rather written fax or electronic, and the issuance of a purchase order. And all purchase orders are to be approved by the controller and budget analyst. And in addition, purchase orders must include all quotes and backup documents.
Okay, Counsel, does anyone have any questions or anything that we'd like to ask at this time? Councilwoman Salt.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just for the citizens edification, this is a change from what?
Uh, the, it is to clarify, the three thousand dollars at a purchase order is, that is in a section, uh, prior to Section Two. However, it's kind of buried in that, so we wanted to clarify, because most people go to the dollar amount under the following subsections. And then also, uh, we want, we have a, a chance to also clarify that purchase orders are gonna be approved by the controller and the budget analyst.
Thank you. Councilman Grove.
Was this something that, uh, was brought out during the audit? I'm just curious, since I'm on the Audit Committee.
This was something that was brought out by me because I had a bit of a pain like that and a little anal in how things are worded, uh, for the directors, ease of the directors to be able to look at a document in the same place. Uh, it was noted in a different section of the policy, so we're not exactly changing the policy, but I wanted it restated in a different subsection of that policy. Uh, the other thing that I requested was that anything, uh, that is in there and that gets issued a purchase order, I wanted both the budget analysts to review the line item it gets charged to against the city's budget. And then I also wanted, uh, the controller to make sure that those funds were definitely not only budgeted, but that they're all being adhered to. So, that was just me wanting to clarify for the ease of the directors and how they do their daily work.
Well, removing ambiguity from procedures is a excellent thing. It makes life easy for everybody in, uh, the Audit Committee, so appreciate it. Thank you.
City Attorney Wayne Olson.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to point out to the council that you have a revised resolution in front of you to adopt this purchasing policy. And, uh, one of the provisions in there, which I suggested, was that whenever the city does a, a purchase request that doesn't follow straight competitive bidding, a determination needs to be made that the purchasing is being done to provide the best value to the city. And this resolution provides that the city manager is directed to make that determination or the city manager is designee, uh, so that, uh, we are in compliance with, uh, the provisions that authorize us to, to use competitive bidding in, in multiple ways. But that determination has to be made before any purchase is made through the competitive bidding process. And, and so the resolution clarifies that, that, uh, authorization is delegated to the city manager.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Carver, for your information. At this time, unless there's any other further questions, we can go ahead with the motion. Uh, Councilman Grove.
Mayor Protem, I make a motion that we approve Resolution Romeo dash two-zero-two-zero-dash-zero-zero-eight-dash-zero-three.
Okay, Councilwoman Salt.
Thank you. Just for a second.
At this time, Counsel, if you prepare to vote.
Okay, uh, Mayor, Mayor Protem, we're gonna have to, we have a problem, uh, technical problem, so just vote by hand. If you'd raise your right hand if you're for eyes. And it's unanimous. Okay, thank you.
So, this passed unanimously. Okay, now, we're gonna move on to the development agreement. And Mr. Greg Van Smith.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Protem and Counsel. Tonight, I only have one item similar to the last meeting. I had a development agreement for the LGE property, which was a mixed-use industrial, uh, pad site subdivision. Tonight, uh, City Manager Phillips had mentioned that Heritage Village is coming online. This is the residential subdivision due east of our library. The entire subdivision is approximately forty-two acres in this first phase, which is the phase closest to the library, uh, bordered by Haltem Road, Spring Lake Parkway, and Glenview's down here, is just around eleven acres, I want to say a hundred and eleven residential lots. In this subdivision, the developer is responsible for all the infrastructure. And that's what you see here. You see water mains, storm sewer, and sanitary sewer mains. A couple of things that are in this subdivision that are probably just a little bit different than what you're used to seeing in these development agreements is across Haltem Road, here's their park, our library, that are going to install an upgraded crosswalk. It'll be very similar to what we have on Broadway Avenue in front of our recreation center. Additionally, there's quite a few families that live in these apartments on the north side of Spring Lake Parkway. They will be installing crosswalks across Spring Lake Parkway. The, both these locations are spelled out in the facilities agreement. What I wanted to highlight is the Haltem, whoops. The Haltem Road and Spring Lake Crosswalk is actually gonna be here. In meeting with the developer's engineer and looking at how we would have to install crosswalks through here, based on the speeds and the site distance from Haltem Road, we figured that this was a much more safer location. I will be meeting with this apartment complex. If you notice, there's a space between these two buildings right here to see if maybe there's a way they can open up their wrought iron fence so the kids that are gonna cross have easy access to go right through here, then across, uh, crosswalk through here, and either stay on this side of the road to go west, or they can walk through the subdivision. So, I just wanted to make that clarification. The crosswalks through here will be the kind somewhat similar to what you see on Main Street and Grapevine, where they have the lighted raised pavement markings. And they will also have, so you're just your normal crosswalk signs. They will be lit up with the, uh, RFD underneath, similar to what we now have on Haltem Road immediately north of the high school. The city does envision installing sidewalks, at least for now, between these two entrances on the north side of Spring Lake. That will be funded through the line item in the city's budget for sidewalks. If you remember, that is a line item that was added in the current fiscal year. So, having said that, I would be happy to address any questions y'all might have. Otherwise, I would recommend approval of this item.
Okay. Councilwoman Walter Grove.
Are they still planning on having the cutouts on Spring Lake? So...
For parking?
Yeah, for the
Yes.
side street parking.
Right. In fact, what, the one closest to this intersection over here is gonna have to be slightly modified to accommodate the handicap ramp for that crosswalk.
Okay, yeah, I, I remember the, the, the artist's run nearings
Right.
with, uh, the way the streets would have
Exactly.
parking on both sides and then go to single lane.
Well, actually, it's just going to have parking on the south side.
Okay, on the south side?
Right.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions that they'd like to ask staff? Or anyone from Heritage Village? Councilman Wees.
My assist for the developer, I wanted to tell you thank you for listening to us. You got this, uh, looking at the crosswalks and everything. I just appreciate you listening to us and the safety concerns that we had, uh, for that area about people getting over to the library and getting to and from in that area. So, I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate, we're very excited about coming forward. It's, we're gonna be breaking ground hopefully within a month.
Yay, we're all very excited. Okay, anyone else? Okay, at this time, uh, if you have enough other questions, we're prepared for a motion. Uh, Councilman Grove.
Mayor Protem, uh, make a motion that we approve the development agreement between Haltem City and the, I guess, Our Country Homes, uh, or for the Heritage Village, uh, development.
And Councilman Wees.
I thought I beat him that time. Just for a second.
Okay, at this time, please enter your vote. This passed unanimously. Congratulations, and thank you. Next, we have ordinance O-two-zero-two-zero-dash-zero-zero-eight-dash-one-five, also known as CU dash zero-zero-four-dash-two-zero. And Ms. Bachelor will be presenting.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and Counsel again. So, this is a public hearing and consider action on the application of Charles Soma on behalf of Alcala Construction for a conditional use permit to allow for a contractor's office with shop and garage locally known as Five Thousand Five Parish. The applicant has requested to rezone, uh, to conditional use permit to allow for the contractor's office with shop and garage. Uh, the current zoning is C three commercial. Property owner owns the business caddy corner across the street from this property, and they have grown and are out of space at their original site. They purchased the property to construct an office garage for storage and additional parking for their work vehicles. Storage of materials and equipment will all be in an enclosed structure. The only outdoor storage on the site will be regulated to the work vehicles. There will be a six-foot, uh, fence enclosure to screen the work vehicles. If you notice on Exhibit A Design Standards, Items Three and Four, uh, no parking or display shall be allowed on unimproved surfaces, and all vehicle parking and loading shall be on asphalt or concrete. I bring this to your attention, um, because when I get to the PowerPoint, P and Z, um, was advised of that because the site plan, we had the time call for, um, a slurry seal on a hard surface, which was not defined. And we did not get an updated site plan until Friday. Um, but there will be some questions that you'll have for the applicant at that point. So, this is the property, uh, right here. It's next to, um, Auto Paint and Body on the east side, and a residence, even though it's C three, it is a residential use on the west side. And this is the property that, um, Alcala has currently, which is their, um, office, and they have a shop building over here. So, like I said, it's caddy corner across the street. This is the, um, site plan that we originally had presented to P and Z. If you notice, the, um, fire lane only goes to this portion, and then we have ten parking spaces behind that. And it's hard to see, but it says hard surface with a slurry seal. Um, that was not an approved material, so the revised hot plan we got was Friday. And they've extended the concrete to incorporate the parking area. And from this point to this accessory building, which is a, a carport that's gonna be enclosed, is a hundred and fifty feet. So, about fifty foot of it is concrete, but then that leaves this area back here, which they're defining as, uh, road-based material with a seal. If you notice in the pictures, this is, uh, when code first noticed that the property was being utilized. Um, we were not aware of it. There wasn't a certificate of occupancy. There was activity going on, so, um, code did notify them to begin with. This is, uh, what was stored out there whenever they first notified. Um, you have some form boards that the Alcala Construction does, uh, concrete work and construction of that nature. So, they were advised to, um, get this cleaned up so, um, that it was developable for what they're wanting to do. This is a structure that's already in place that you see at the, at the far north side of the property that will be enclosed. Right now, it's more of a carport situation that's open. Little bit better view there. So, this is, uh, what was cleaned up, uh, before they went to P and Z. As you can tell, all the storage outdoors gone. You can actually see the carport now that will be enclosed. They've got it all graded and ready to go. These vehicles you see over here is at the Paint and Body Shop to the east. It's not on this property. And there's a close-up look. Um, so one of our concerns is, you see, there's a trailer, and there's a dump truck here, so there is vehicle maneuvering going back to this carport. So, that's where the, um, road-based material with a seal is concerning as opposed to asphalt or concrete. So, if we could get some clarification from the applicant on how they're gonna address that. This is from Google Map, uh, facing north from Parish, facing east from Parish towards Fuel City, facing south across the street. Again, this is Alcala's current location, so this is overflow for them. And then facing to the west towards, uh, Leighton. You have any questions? I'm available, and the applicant and his representative both are here.
Okay, Counsel, do you have any questions for staff at this time? Councilman Grove.
Ms. Bachelor, what would be a adequate surface for that hundred feet between the concrete and the port?
Based on Exhibit A Design Standards, would be concrete or asphalt.
Concrete or asphalt?
Yes, sir.
So, whatever a hard surface with a seal on it, that's a undefined thing, so
Correct.
concrete or asphalt. All right, thank you.
Okay, anyone else have any questions? Okay, at this time, I'll open, uh, up for the public hearing. If anyone has any comments, pro or con.
Good evening, Mayor Protem.
If you'll give, state your name.
I will. Charles Soma, eighty-three-hundred Cardinal Lane, North Richardson Hills, Texas. And I'm working with Alcala Construction because they do a lot of construction work for us and have asked us to help them in, in this, in this situation. The issue with the, uh, hard surface not being, uh, asphalt or concrete was that there's no storage on that. And the ordinance was if you store on a facility, then you needed to have a hard surface or either asphalt or concrete. So, that was the reason that it was not included. Now, the shed that's in the back, it was, it was as you saw it, but because of the fact that we did not have a, a, a conditional use permit at the time, they didn't do any more work on it. So, what they are going to do is to curb that because that's only for use for storing forms, uh, for storing, uh, cones, and for that type of material. Now, since they will be needing to go back to that area to get it, we are proposing that we have a drive that's hard surface that would accommodate the ordinance in terms of access. But the area on the sides is not for storage. It's just because in the future, as the company continues to grow, then it may become necessary. And at that time, they would then come in and they would hard, they would provide a hard surface because of the ordinance. Now, the ordinance has its validity, and we are very proud of what is the code enforcement and what planning is doing because they're helping us to maintain and to improve the area. And if you go down in that area, you'll see where Alcala has already spent probably a million dollars in improvements. Even with this, this improvement is probably a million, uh, or about a hundred and fifty thousand already with the office and the warehouse and so forth, and improving. So, they're, they're making a major contribution there. So, we're asking that we not have to, or that they not have to pave that whole ten thousand square feet, which would be another sixty thousand dollars, that there's nothing stored on it. And so, it wouldn't require, uh, hard surface under the ordinance. But if we're going to be accessing, which they will be, they'll be accessing that storage building, which will be enclosed, and it will have, uh, some of their, uh, their materials that they use for construction stored in there, and they'll have to go back and get it. So, we would, we would recommend, uh, with the, in, with the, uh, planning department that we have a paved access to that storage facility, but not have to pave the whole ten thousand square feet. So, that's basically, and I know as a, as a counsel, you, you know, you're here to make judgment decisions. Uh, if it was just, uh, interpreting an ordinance, you wouldn't have to, to, to be here because that's your purpose, is to take an ordinance, determine how it applies to the particular improvements that are being made out there. So, what we're asking for is that we not have, that they not have to pave the whole ten thousand square feet, but that they have an access, paved access to the storage facility, which is enclosed. Now, keep in mind that there is a screening fence, a wood screening fence, that screens the whole back portion of this property. So, this is not a property that's visible from the street. The office area, the landscaping in front, all of that is gonna be very attractive. And then the, the screening fence will have landscaping in front of it. Uh, but you're not gonna see that hard, that, that, uh, hard surface area in the back that's not gonna see that hard, that, that, uh, hard surface area in the back that's not paved because it's not visible from the street. If for some reason that, let's say with weather or whatever, if there's degradation of that surface, they're in the construction business, so they would take a bobcat and smooth it out if necessary or something of that nature. So it's not, we're not asking for something that's not reasonable. We're asking that you consider the access to that storage area rather than paving the whole 10,000 square feet. Be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Councilman Grove?
Mr. Soma?
Yes.
My understanding is the only reason that we're here is because you're, like, the company got caught by using that property without having the CU. Is that about right?
I, yeah, I, I guess you could say caught. They, uh, it was C3 and they, they were using it to store...
They were having vehicles storing, putting stuff without the conditional use.
And it shouldn't have been done.
Okay.
There's no question about that.
Okay, so we're, we're there. Okay. So are you proposing that we have a driveway to go to those carports?
Oops. Hello?
Um...
See, that's what you get for letting an amateur work at this.
I don't know, they have to get off here.
What we're proposing is that, that we, uh, there we go, right there.
Okay, so this is the one from Friday.
Okay. Where's the green button? At the light? Okay.
So where that line is...
The, the, the 100 feet where that line is, that's where the drive would go back to that storage.
So we're looking at concrete there?
It would be concrete.
So concrete drive, so...
Yeah.
Now, you're gonna be maneuvering vehicles inside that, um...
No, there's nothing inside that.
Well, you, so you're not gonna have those trucks, that dump truck that's stored?
No, no, that's what I was, that's what I was saying, is that that was prior to, we didn't, they didn't want to, they couldn't do any more construction work.
So you're gonna remove, you're gonna remove that structure that's back there?
No, no, no. Structure's there. There's gonna be a curb there. It's strictly for storage, and it's enclosed.
Okay.
There's no vehicles that are driven inside that, uh...
So there's not gonna be any vehicles back there?
No. Only, the only vehicles would be to go back and get whatever materials that they need out of the storage building.
Okay, so is it gonna be, um, improved surface?
That's what I'm proposing, is that that be concrete.
So a driveway all the way, how many feet off the, uh, so the, whatever bobcat or whatever forklift or whatever they're gonna use to maneuver?
There would be an apron there. There would be a, a, along the front of it for, for that access point.
Okay, 'cause I did want to make sure that they're not maneuvering on dirt or...
No.
Because an unapproved or a hard surface with a sealant is not a clear definition. That's why I asked Ms. Bachelor, what is a clear definition of a, of appropriate surface?
Yeah, they're, they're, they're changing the ordinance and correctly so. It used to be a slurry fill, uh, seal, but then they're changing that to a, a, a different approach, and that's why we put in there the seal coat instead of the slurry. But in the back, just to control dust and that type of thing.
Yep.
But, uh, the access point would be on hard surface back to that storage building.
Okay, so how wide would be, how, wa, how wide would that driveway be?
About 24 feet.
24 feet?
Yeah.
Okay. And so it's gonna go to that, and, and you said there's gonna be a curb in front of those where we saw that...
Curb around the, around the building.
Around that, around that carport.
Because they're gonna enclose it, and they're gonna have, uh, garage doors that would roll, roll up, and it's all, it's a surface.
And how many feet of paving is gonna be in front of the, uh, the new garage facility that's gonna be back there?
Enough that they can, then they can maneuver.
Okay, and so they're gonna load up all the vehicles on the concrete side as opposed to...
All the, yeah, all the, all the vehicles are stored on the concrete.
Okay, so they're gonna drive the material from that storage to where the vehicles are, and not gonna roll the vehicles onto the unapproved surface?
The vehicles would go to the storage building, load what, what they needed, and then, and then leave, leave, leave the facility.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have any further questions for Mr. Soma? Okay, the...
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Uh, the, uh, public hearing is still open. I see no one has any comments, so I'm gonna close the public hearing. Okay. At 7:45. At this time, we're prepared for a motion. Uh, Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Mayor Protem Thompson. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Ordinance Number Zero dash two zero two zero dash oh oh eight dash one five, also known as CU dash oh oh four dash two oh on the first reading.
Okay. Councilman Wees?
That's for a second.
Okay. So at this time, if you're prepared to cast...
Mayor Protem, I just have a question.
Sure.
Ms. Bachelor, are you satisfied with, um, what we've been able to ascertain of what material's gonna be used for the driveway and...
So my understanding is there'll be a 24-foot drive from the concrete parking area that is designated he, here?
Yep.
Uh, so basically, it's, it'll be like the equivalent of the fire lane, which is here, going all the way back to this building. That should suffice as, as maneuvering area. If that's not sufficient for y'all, then, um, Mr. Soma had mentioned about the 10,000 square feet, which is the 100 foot from here, and then the 100 foot of the width of the, um, parking lot. Uh, the building is 65. If you wanted them to carry that 65 across there, that's, you know, another option, but 24 is enough to maneuver on, yes.
Okay. And Mr. Soma or whoever, is, when are we gonna have a new rendering with the, the, I'd feel more comfortable if we had a new rendering than properly illustrated exactly. So when do you think you'll be able to have that in, by our second reading?
Oh, I'll, by, by tomorrow, the next day.
Very cool. Appreciate it, sir.
Okay, any further questions before we cast our vote? Okay. If you will cast your votes, please. This has passed unanimously on the first read. Okay, at this time, we're gonna have, uh, staff reports, uh, water billing updates.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and council. I just wanted to clarify, uh, some information regarding the water department and the utility billing. I just want to let you guys know again, there are no third-party vendors that the city is working with. The city is doing 100% of the billing and the collections, just as we did before Fathom was involved. So we are not using any third-party vendors to do any piece of that forest. Again, there are a collection of vendors that we work with for software that provide different services in order to make that department flow, as with any other city. They do the same thing, uh, but there are no third-party vendors involved in the operations of that department. And the other thing I wanted, uh, to let all of you know is, uh, we'll be doing the water and wastewater study for utility billing, uh, coming up. We'll be sending out an RFQ within the next week, so we're really excited to get that rate study underway so that we can have the results back this fiscal year and be able to budget properly for the, the next budget year coming.
Anyone have any questions for Ms. Bous at this time? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, is, council, is there any future items that you would like to place on the agenda? Okay. Since no one has any comments on that, we're gonna move to the boards and commissions and committees. Does anyone have any resignations for any board? Does anyone have any appointment or reappointment for the boards or commissions? So at this time, we'll move on to the excuse the absence of Dr. Antrong and Gabe Van Zent. If I could have a motion, please. Councilman Grove?
Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion that we excuse, uh, the mayor, uh, Antrong, and councilwoman Gabe Van Zent.
And councilwoman Sol?
Thank you. That's for a second.
Thank you. And if anyone would please prepare to vote. And this passes unanimously. Okay. I think at this time, we've already had our executive session, so we will adjourn this meeting at seven fifty-one.